Good morning and welcome to the second day of committee meetings for the Washington State University Board of Regents. We will begin today's meeting by acknowledging that WSU's location statewide are on the homelands of native peoples who have lived in this region from time immemorial. The university expresses its deepest respect for and gratitude toward these original and current caretakers of the region. Members of the public are invited to view this meeting via the YouTube livestream. A link to the livestream is available on the WSU Board of Regents website. The Regents will now hold an executive session to discuss litigation or potential litigation with legal counsel. This session will be closed. The executive session will conclude at approximately 9:00 AM unless it is extended by further announcement. If any action is taken as a result of these discussions, it will be taken later today in open session. At this time, I would ask anyone that is not legal counsel or a member of the board or President Schultz to please go ahead and leave. Good morning. The Board of Regents will extend our executive session until 9:20. If it extends any further, then I will come back and make another announcement. Thank you. If it extends any further, then I will come back and make another announcement. Thank you. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The regions will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. So as we have folks joining us, we want to just take a couple minutes to get settled here. So we will start our meeting at 9:30 this morning. The board of regents will now convene an open session and we will begin the executive and governance committee meetings in five minutes. Good morning. We're starting our second day of committee meetings. We are officially going to kick off our Executive and Governance Committee. We anticipate that our meeting will include lots of exciting and dynamic conversations. I'd like to begin our first of four information items with a review of the annual Conflict of Interest Statement. So I'd ask that our Attorney General, Nathan Dean, join us. I do want to mention, if you haven't seen on your place settings, is the actual Conflict of Interest form. And in the spirit of not just checking a box, we want to just take a minute and reflect on exactly what it is that we mean by Conflict of Interest. So Nathan.
All right. Thank you. The obligation, well, I just want to talk a little bit about where this document stems from. So there are several sources of law that apply here and are the reason why there's a Conflict of Interest policy at the Board of Regents. So there's the Washington State Ethics Act has a component of Conflict of Interest that is adopted into the, has been incorporated into the policy of the Regents' House. The Regents, as volunteer members of the Board of Regents, are subject to the Washington State Ethics Act. There's also the University Ethics Policy, EP45, which is incorporated into the Regents' policy. That also applies to the Regents. That ethics policy is intended to help universities, employees, and volunteers comply with the Ethics Act. And then finally, independent of Washington State law and the university policy, generally, the Regents have a fiduciary duty to act in the best interest of the university. And so that is also another source of the responsibility to be aware and avoid Conflict of Interest. As defined in the Regents' policy that they've, this board has adopted for themselves to help them comply with the Ethics Act, the EP45, and their fiduciary duties, the Conflict of Interest has been defined as a personal interest, financial, familiar, professional, or otherwise, that might impair or reasonably appear to an objective outsider observer to impair a Regents' independent, unbiased judgment in the discharge of the responsibilities to the university. So that's how a fiduciary, or the, I'm sorry, that's how the Conflict of Interest is defined in the policy. You know, it's, it's a little bit of a subjective call, obviously. You have to look at objective factors there and determine if there's any interest you have, not just, not just financial. That's the most common ones are financial interests that people are always interested in. But it could also be a professional or familiar relationship that, you know, somebody from the outside would say they, they can't really be, you know, objective in their decision making because of some interest they have in a transaction or a decision that's before the board. So what are the requirements of the policy that you have? First of all, the form that you all have today that we're talking about is required by the policy that you all sign the form. There are two pieces of that form that you need to acknowledge. The first is that you filed a financial disclosure. That is a separate RCW that requires those financial disclosures to be turned in every year. Part of the reason for those financial disclosures in state law is just that, so that, you know, you can, it's a way for you to kind of recall the type of financial areas that you might have interest in and also for the public to be able to see decision makers and government and what financial interests they have. So they can, the public can look for Conflict of Interest is one reason that that state law exists. So the form says that you acknowledge that you filled out that financial disclosure this year and that you've read and understand the Conflict of Interest policy. There's just a couple of things in the Conflict Interest policy that I know that you've all read or will have read and read it before you sign your forms, but just some highlights of the policy. First of all, it, it highlights financial interests and making sure that Regents don't have any financial interest in a transaction that comes before you. Most often, you'll see that an approval of a contract or, or maybe an approval of a building contract or something like that is where you'll see that. And so to make sure that you don't have any ownership interest, basically, in a business that's contracted with the university. If you do have an ownership interest in that business, that is the spot where you should disclose that and recuse yourself from that decision making. What does ownership in, or a stake in the business mean? Usually that means you're either a part owner or in the case of a corporation, like you own stock in that corporation, if, if that would be an ownership in the corporation. Note that that does not include if you have mutual funds that own stock in a particular corporation. It's just directly if you own stock in the corporation. If you have a mutual fund that also happens to invest in a company, that is not a conflict of interest under state law. So that is one interesting exception. I think that is because like it could be a, you know, lots, lots of these mutual funds, they change all the time. It's really hard to even keep track of all the different companies they own, a small stake in. Also in the policy, it notes that the student region, the faculty region cannot participate in any matter that has to do with a faculty member and for the region, or sorry, for the student region, the student region can't participate in any personnel decisions before the board. Luckily, we don't have a lot of those. It also talks about, you know, aside from financial, just identifying a personal, familiar, professional interest you may have. Again, those are hard to identify and those are, you know, as far as like in a policy, you have to have those broad terms. That is really on individual regions to look out for and pay attention to, to make sure that, you know, there's not some really familiar, familiar connection or professional connection that you have with any particular thing that's coming before the board. If something is becoming before the board, you know, you get your board packet usually a week before advance and there's something in there, you go, man, I didn't know that was coming before the board and I really have some type of interest that might objectively interfere with my decision making process. That you should recuse yourself. If you have a question about that, though, and you're not quite sure, ah, you know, I, I know somebody, but I don't really think it, I know that personally it wouldn't affect my decision making, but maybe from the outside it would if you're, you're kind of stuck in the middle there. There's a couple of different things that the policy recommends you do. One is you could talk to the board chair, notify the board chair of it, and you can have a conversation with the board chair. Another is there is an ethics advisor at the university, so you could contact the ethics advisor at the university and kind of talk through that. Raleigh Hansen is his name, and he's an excellent resource. You know, does this all the time. And so he's a great resource to pick his brain if you'd like. And also, my office, of course, is available to consult. So one or all three of those resources are great resources to talk through if you're having, if you're on the fence about whether to recuse yourself or not. So that's a overview of the policy and the importance of Conflict of Interest and the document you'll be asked to sign if you haven't already today. Any questions for me about the policy or the statement?
So I'll just add that I, during my day job, work on a project that I want to ensure that there's no blurred lines. And so worked with the AG's office when I first joined the board six years ago. And we have kind of a written document of what those boundaries around how I show up to do my day job and how it relates to the volunteer work that I do on the Board of Regents. So I believe and have seen this board to act with ethics and integrity and to really center our WSU values. I want to make sure that this just doesn't become something that we just sign and then we slide away, that we really take it seriously. And if there are questions, you have lots of resources to reach out to, to make sure that you feel comfortable with this and that the topics that we cover in our board meetings, if at any time you feel as though you need to recuse yourself, that we're supportive of that. Thank you, Nathan. These are due today. If you can complete them and submit them to Emily, that would be great. All right. So we have other information items that we'll want to spend time really going through. And so I would like to move over to our community agreements discussion. And this is a little bit awkward sitting in front of the screen that has a slide on it. But what I would like to do is just to kind of refresh everyone's memory. At the June retreat, Regent Shetler led us through a conversation that was really a critical one. In my time on the board, I don't recall us pausing and asking each other, what do I need to feel safe to say what needs to be said? And this exercise really turned into a very healthy conversation. And so I'd like to just share the results of that conversation and really activate this as part of the way in which we work together over this next year. So the first statement was really around the idea that we each can show up with differing opinions. And that diversity of thought is something that is celebrated at this table and something that I think is critically important. So we recognize discretion is paramount within our group. If a region does not wish an idea or concept to be attributed to them directly, their wish from region discussions are shared. We'll be honored to cultivate a collaborative environment and promote a single region voice. Secondly, we will embrace hearing and learning about diverse perspectives and dissenting opinions. We will endeavor to comprehend each Regents' remarks without passing judgment. We will foster open dialogue where everyone is respectfully heard without interruption. We will embrace the belief that all ideas, thoughts, and comments have value. We will pose clarifying questions to ensure understanding. We will acknowledge the coexistence of multiple truths. We will promote direct communication to promote clarity. And we will ensure fair and equitable recognition of all idea contributions. So I just will pause for a minute and just see, is there, is this reflective of the conversation that we had in June? Did we miss anything? And do you feel comfortable moving forward? So it's a three-part question. Does this reflect? And is there anything missing? Let's start there. Regent Blankenship.
Thank you, Chair Shaw. I, I remember the conversation and I believe you were able to have a good summation of where we landed on how to have respectful dialogue. Not the parse words. I have trouble with the statement of multiple truths. I would rather word the concept in a different way because I think the truth is the truth. And we, we may interpret that differently from our perspectives, but I'd like to word that differently somehow.
I appreciate your comments. I'm open to your suggestion on how we might reword that. And I'll just share that I think part of truth is also the truth of your lived experience. And so my truth of how my lived experiences is probably different than yours might be. And I think John has said occasionally, my truth and your truth, sometimes there's, the truth might be somewhere in between. But the power of words is when we share what the words mean. And so I am open to if there are folks that have an idea about how to change that so that we feel most comfortable. Can you do your microphone?
Thank you. Can we put a word like understanding in it, like multiple understandings of truth?
Other thoughts or comments? I'm not asking you to approve this, but really just activate this.
I just think it's a good list and I really appreciated the exercise we went through to put it together. And, you know, as I look at all of these, one of the, many of these have been a hallmark of this board since I've been on it since 2014. And I've told many people how the WSU board members work together amongst ourselves and with the administration in such respectful way where we're all working towards common goals, I think is just extraordinary.
Just say ditto to Regent Powell, but I do appreciate Regent Blankenship's input. I was also uncomfortable with multiple truths, so the rewording is really helpful. Thank you. Our provost might have a, an addition?
Just say coexistence of multiple lived experiences. And then you avoid the word truth, which has loaded meanings in 2024.
Just to confirm, Chris, you took out the word truths and put lived experience?
Yeah.
Anybody have hesitation with that? Okay. Our Regent Vogel, you were not in this session. Is there anything that you feel like might be missing or that you might need clarification of understanding?
I don't think so. As Regent Powell was saying, I think it's a really nice, comprehensive list, so.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the time and effort that we spent on this. And with each of you, I find that I learn from your experiences, from your professional expertise. It was such a joy to spend time with Regent Shetler to prepare the strategic planning retreat agenda and to bring in a facilitator. So I really do appreciate President Schultz, the ability for us to kind of rethink that strategic planning retreat in June to include elements like this because we just don't have time to talk about how we work together. And I think it was a solidification of what is currently happening with the board. So excellent. This is a really nice kind of pivot to the next information item, which is the Region Onboarding Ad-Hoc Committee. With each of us, we have likely had a different experience onboarding. Some of you onboarded during COVID and that was very, very different than the onboarding where we show up on campus and we meet with lots of different folks and different groups. And so we have acknowledged yesterday in our meeting that we have two open positions for new Regents to join us. And we're just waiting on our governor to share with us who he has selected to sit at this table with us, which is such an honor to be here. And we want to make sure that our onboarding is reflective of those values and that our onboarding is not only comprehensive, but isn't just a couple of days of meet everyone and learn everything about a billion dollar higher ed organization, be ready to sit in and governing role. So I've asked Regent Pika to lead an ad hoc committee this year to work on what that onboarding looks, sounds, and feels like. And we are utilizing our opportunity to onboard our student Regent, Regent Vogel, as she goes through kind of this year with us, what's working, maybe what isn't working? What can we maybe do differently? And included in, in onboarding is also the idea of how do we offboard our Regents? And we're listening to understand what we could do better and what we did do really well. And so Regent Pika will be meeting with Regent Shetler, who has stepped off the board, finishing his six-year term. And Regent Serna will meet with Regent Redman to listen for any constructive feedback that we might hear from the two of them. So this is an important opportunity for us to bring on two new Regents. And the Regents' time continues to, to cycle, so this won't be the only time. We'll expect that there'll be other Regents whose terms will expire and/or they might need to, to step away. We're ready as a board. I wanted to just also mention that President Schultz and I had the opportunity to meet with five community leaders who we talked to them about their interest of potentially serving in a role on the Board of Regents, recognizing that is not our decision, but certainly we want to encourage folks that are interested in this opportunity, that the governor's office conducts all of that due diligence and makes that selection. We are eager to welcome two new members to this table. And we wanted to ensure that anyone that might be considering stepping into a role or submitting their name, that they've had an opportunity to talk to us, particularly in a big year where we're selecting our next president. With that, I do want to just allow space. Regent Pika, if there is any other comments you might want to make about the onboarding committee or your thoughts on this next year?
I think this is really.
I think this is really frankly needed and exciting. Having just gone through this myself and in fact still taking advantage of it. On this visit, I had two more of my, what I call orientation meetings. So I would include Regent Vogel as one of our new regions. So it isn't something you just sit down and talk about, you know, in a two, three-hour session, but there's multiple layers to it and, and really needed because it's a big job. And I think it deserves this kind of attention. And B K, thank you for, we doing this together. And thanks for appointing this.
If you haven't sat through an onboarding meeting with Regent Pika, it is an experience because he asks so many curious questions that I'm finding six years into this, I'm learning every time I have an opportunity to meet with someone at WSU, but in particular to watch Regent Pika kind of take this on. Regent Powell?
You may be planning on looking at this. And I'm not sure, because I was, my orientation was so many years ago now, what the, the current process is. But one of the more valuable parts of an orientation I had, I think it was a corporate one, but a long time ago for, for board is to actually have an exercise where we hear about common governance, the best, best governments, governance practices. So it goes beyond the orientation to WSU and all that WSU does. But to really sort of have a comprehensive view and understanding by all board members of where do we step across the line if between governance and operations, conflicts of interest, Nathan went through a lot of that this morning, but, but complete with examples of what, you know, where, you know, this, this is sort of like, this is the best practice. These are some of the things that occur sometimes in boards that we want to try to avoid. So that, and I think that piece of it periodically would be useful for the whole board because we come and go and, you know, and I think, so I, I've sort of found that that to me has, has guided me over the years. And I had it years ago, but I just found of all the things I've had in board orientations over the years, that was the most valuable. It was, it was a module from some organization. And I don't think it was AGB or anything, but, but I just found it very helpful.
Regent Vogel, Regent Dickinson?
I just wanted to say how appreciative I am of how welcomed I have felt by everyone on the board. But, you know, especially Regions Pika, Serna, Ramos, and Chair Shauer for taking so much time to make sure, especially when I first came into this role that, you know, you sat down and talked with me and I felt like I really got to know you. So I, I just really appreciate the effort. And I think it has really helped make me feel like, you know, a, a full member of this board, so.
Recognizing that we are embarking upon two significant decisions and things around the President Search, some of our fiscal responsibilities as it pertains to the rebuilding of the PAC 12. Where is the governor's office and understanding a sense of urgency to have a full-size board?
We, we are in communication with the governor's office through Glenda and our government relations team. And, and following this meeting, I will reiterate that this is of really critical importance to us. And I'll communicate that on behalf of the current board.
I've reiterated that in person. And certainly Glenda understands the urgency of the time between September and November. I also, I, I think, I want to also mention, and we do have a couple of slides, we have been continually trying to ensure that while we're not a board where we come together and we invite other board members, that we are continuing to follow some of those best practices. And so I think during Marty's term as chair, she implemented a self-assessment tool. And it's time for us to maybe look at that again. The other tool that both Marty and Jen and I have talked about is a board competency matrix. So the idea that we could send to the governor's office, here are a list of five individuals we've met with, and here is the competency of the board. So you could perhaps see where there might be gaps and/or where we have multiple folks that, that come with similar professional backgrounds. And so maybe we could just show a couple of these slides. So we recently asked the board to participate in a voluntary competency matrix, which is from the other boards that I serve on, kind of part of what you just do when you first get started on that board. And so this, thank you, Kyle. These set of slides just show a little bit of kind of the depth of expertise on the board and areas where there might be additional members that have similar professional backgrounds. So you'll see community engagement is an area where the board has some professional experience. There's business and entrepreneurship, environmental, higher education, strategic communications. You hear some of that just even in the questions that we ask and in the, the feedback that we provide. So this is something that we're hoping with new onboarding of board members, we'll be able to update this so that we get a good understanding and sense of what areas of expertise the board has. I think another way to look at this is in terms of how we might define whether we're knowledgeable or we might have expertise, so higher level expertise in this. I think with Regent Redman, having a law degree was really helpful. Not that she ever provided advice or counsel as an attorney. She just thought from that lens often. And it was one of many lenses that she thought from. I think certainly Regent Shetler's experience in property management and development was another aspect that added great value. So this is a little bit as to where the current board is. And then I asked for voluntary demographics about who's sitting at this table because I think this is another element which really speaks to that lived experience. And we have an age range of 22 to 74 sitting at this table. I think age is another dimension. Gender is also a dimension that we like to look at and think about, as is race. And so I had a, an intern, I think I've shared this, but I'm going to share it again because it was pretty powerful for me. I had an intern at WSU Vancouver, Fafatay, who just graduated. And I had the opportunity to shake her hand across the stage in Vancouver at graduation. Fafatay was an intern at our company. And at the end of her internship, she said that there are so many that are watching that have not ever seen a native Hawaiian sit at this table or in this position. And you forget, because I of course was not thinking that Fafatay was paying any attention to what I was up to. But we do have the opportunity to create a space where others may not have had the opportunity to sit at that table. And so all of these demographics are really important for us to, to just think about and to recognize that that brings different opinions and thoughts and experiences that just enrich the work that we do and the way that we make decisions and is reflective of our community, including our community of students and alumni. So. So this is just another aspect of, while we have many, many items that we're trying to move forward, the governance of this board is also important and not being missed. And so with that, I think that probably sums up the onboarding ad hoc committee and the work that we're doing to try and set up not only Regent Vogel as she steps into this role, but the other new regions that we are anticipating welcoming very, very soon. Any other comments or questions before we transition to the next item? All right. The next item is the Presidential Search Advisory Committee. So there are quite a bit of dimensions of this next element of our discussion. And we want to spend the time to be able to really not only talk about where we are in the presidential search process, but also really ensure that the board has the opportunity to have a robust conversation. We will break. And then when we start the board meeting, there is an element of this that will need approval. So the work that we're talking about here is around the leadership profile and the action item that will come for board consideration at the Board of Director or Board of Regents meeting, which will convene later this morning. So with that, Regent Ramos and I are going to tag-team this presentation. What I would like to do is to be able to provide, the first part of this presentation is around the Presidential Search Advisory Committee formation, the engagement process. And then we will talk about the details of the presidential leadership profile in terms of one of the elements that's critical for us to align on, which is around compensation. And then I'm going to provide a little bit of insight regarding the draft leadership profile that was sent to you. We've already gotten some great insight and red lines from many members of this board, but we want to go through those in a way that allows us to have a good conversation and then be able to provide some direction on what a final draft would look like of that leadership profile with all of our feedback integrated in order for us to feel ready for that action item later this morning. So with that, Regent Ramos serves lots of different positions on the board, including the Chair of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee. So maybe we can just get started with first set of slides.
All right, great. Thank you, Chair Shauer. And thank you to the Board of Regents also for being part of this journey. We have an enormous responsibility to write the next chapter with the 12th president of Washington State University. So with that, I have a few overview slides. One is about our process. And thank you to Regent Powell, Regent Blankenship, Regent Serna. They've been involved with me from the very beginning to, you know, define this process, to volunteer their extra time to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything that we can to have an open process, process that's focused on quality and inclusion and looking to the future, really having our listening ears on. So when we started in April and you know, thanks to President Schultz giving us early notice, we were well-prepared to embark on our first set of listening sessions with the focus groups. And that led us to our first draft of the Presidential Profile. So you've seen iterations of the profile going all the way back to April, May timeframe. And concurrent with that, we also said, you know, let's be really thoughtful about how we open this process and who will serve on the committee. And the reason why we thought we needed to extend the invitation to an open application process was just to make sure all the voices were being heard. The quiet voices that are out there might feel differently if they had to send in an application with an explanation of why they wanted to serve on the committee. So as you all well know, we had over 150 applications come in. We evaluated the applications and we chose another 21 members to join us in the June timeframe as well as our strategic retreat, which helped to continue to inform the Presidential Search Profile, Presidential Leadership Profile. We launched the committee in July. We had an onboarding session in August. And we've conducted about 25 listening sessions to date. So just to give you an idea of this committee, it's an amazingly brilliant, caring, dedicated group of people with extensive backgrounds. And I just want to thank everyone who has joined the committee volunteering to serve. One of the very first things we did at our onboarding, so we gave everyone a copy of Leading Crimson in Gray with the idea, the idea that, you know, writing the next chapter is an important responsibility to the future of the institution. Our onboarding process in August, and thanks to Nathan and our HR team, we, sorry, Nathan, I, I don't know if you're still in the room, Nathan Dean, our legal counsel. We had an overview of our compliance responsibilities. We also thought it was important to model what it means to use the Equity Impact Assessment Tool. And the questions that, you know, represent items like, you know, what are the unintended consequences of our decisions and our actions? Especially to those who are, you know, often left behind. So we went through the tool. Again, we talked about the leadership profile at that point as it had evolved. We also shared the community listening schedule. And I just had to comment there how everyone's been engaged across all of the committee. I did not mention that our partner, Isaacson Miller, has been with us along the way, certainly. But, you know, we've taken a lot of responsibility throughout this process. And in fact, challenging, I'll just say, the status quo with our search committee, which has been, you know, a good and healthy relationship, frankly. We're holding each other accountable. We're holding each other accountable to making sure that our process yields the best leader that we can find across the nation. So just a little bit of data points here. I think you all participated in many of the listening sessions, over 500, 400 participants, 100 written responses, actually 140 this morning. And we have a database that's graphing all that input. And honestly, the, the feedback has been really involved across the faculty and alumni and staff. So just to give you insight into the sources of feedback. Across all of our listening sessions, whether they were in person, on campus, or virtually, I think our largest being, we had about 74 participants with our extension units across the state, which I was really grateful for. And, you know, people appreciated President Schultz and all the, the effort that you have, you know, extended to Washington State University, including the times of our unique challenges like the pandemic and PAC 12, among a few things. But there is certainly recognition of your dedication to the institution. And then just very, at the highest level, building on the strengths of WSU, being inclusive, transparent, inspiring, we're expecting the candidates to, well, I've heard the words walk on water. I've heard the words be unicorn, just high expectations. And, and I would just confirm and, and maybe reinforce that we should have very high expectations for our next leader. And then, so with that, my last slide here, the key opportunities which have now evolved in words and ideas from the very beginning in April to what's currently in the document are these six key opportunities. And I'll just go ahead and read through them because it's important that we understand what we're putting on paper and what we're going to assess the candidates with. So driving an ambitious vision for WSU, aligning talent and resources to build a team to actualize impact. Advancing excellence in research, education, and extension, including partnering with industry, business, and government agencies. Championing WSU's reputation and rankings as Washington State's land-grant research university, a leading institution on the regional, national, and global scale. Building and improving an effective and efficient system-wide organizational structure. Galvanizing efforts around enrollment, morale, budget, and ethics after the challenges of the pandemic years. And finally, stewarding and increasing Washington State's, Washington State University's financial resources to ensure organizational sustainability and invest strategically in the university. to ensure organizational sustainability and invest strategically in the university's success. So that's my last slide. The leadership profile goes through this in greater detail. And it's been in many hands. I don't think I've been involved in a document that has had so many hands on it. So we're going to take our time. And part of our message here is to make sure that, you know, the quality, the data, the accuracy reflects as much of what we've heard throughout all these listening sessions. And then the next slide is, Lisa, over to you.
Key element of the leadership profile is setting the compensation range for our next president. And so I want to just share a bit about the research that I conducted to be able to provide to the board a recommendation and context around when we think about our next president and the compensation and benefits that should be included as part of our leadership profile. So first, let me speak to, hopefully you can hear me and all of the things up here. Let me speak to some of the methodology and the work to provide the compensation analysis and research. I worked with the WSU Human Resources Team. So they provided in May of 2024, a bit of insight around our athletic competitors. At the time, PAC-12 was set up a little differently than PAC-12 is set up today. So I received context and information on the athletic peers for PAC-12, the 12 that were there, and Mountain West, so that I could see what the differences in base salary were. They utilize something called Coupa, which is a certified unified program agency that provides, I think that's it, I'm looking at Leslie's face and that is not it. Okay, all right. Okay. College of? That might have been why I was struggling to get a little bit more insight there. I was looking at the wrong thing. Okay. That's important because of another source that I checked. So Coupa data, and I have also been in consultation with Isaacson and Miller. So our search consultant has access to what is currently being advertised, as well as maybe updated compensation information. I then went to the Chronicle of Higher Education that published the end of August, public university salaries, which was fascinating to be able to click on and look at, wow, someone's base might be significantly less than the other category. And then you add benefits, and then you add bonus, and wow, the compensation is pretty significant. So that was another data point that I utilized. And there were 178 chief executive officers that are profiled in that. That's an open, public piece of information. So if you are wondering, you know, where folks are at, that's a way to look at base salary, other compensation, benefits, bonus, total comp. And then lastly, I met with AGB, the Association of Governing Boards, and did some consultation around my methodology. What gaps do I have? What am I missing? What else should I be looking at? The individual that I worked with, his name is Tom Hyatt. And he was really great to work with because he was also very candid and blunt with me about where my gaps were in my compensation analysis. And that also relates back to our inability to be clear about our peers. And so I then went down lots and lots of different paths. So we have identified legislative peers. Those are not on our website any longer. We have strategic planning peers. Those are different than legislative peers, which is different than athletic peers. There are some overlaps, but there is just data upon data upon data. And so as I then started going down all these different paths, cross-checking my data with the Chronicle, looking to see, it became clear to me that I need to identify what are the variables that I look at in terms of comparisons. So what I did do, and I know there are so many academics that may be looking at my work here and trying to poke some holes in it, I had to choose data sets. And so these are the areas that I tried to look at and find consistency and comparison with WSU. So land-grant university was important to me to look at. Multi-campus system, R1 research institution. Do they have a medical school? Where are they in the athletic conference? And what's the student body enrollment? So these are all the factors that I was looking at when I went through and did this research. When I presented my research to Tom earlier this week, I was unclear which peers to choose. And so I have made the decision in the research that I did that I am utilizing our strategic planning peers. That is what is accessible and on our website. So we need consistency. And then I did other charts too. So again, this has been a really fascinating opportunity to start to think through, are we all clear about who our peers are today, who our aspirational peers are? And can we all name those? And so as I've gone through this exercise, it's also become clear that there are other elements that are important. So what I didn't put on here, which I should have, was I also looked at vet schools. So that was another element beyond just the medical school that was important for me to kind of cross-check. I went through every single strategic planning peer. I had some help from the Office of the President. So appreciate those that were cross-checking and doing some QAQC for me. Okay, now tell me where the enrollment is. Is that data from 2023, or is that recently reported data from 2024? What I found was there is a wide variety of strategic planning peers that may or may not check all of these boxes and may or may not have similar enrollment. So I'm going to provide just a little bit of insight before I kind of get into the range of base pay. So as a reminder, these are our strategic planning peers. So as I talk through this, I thought that it would be helpful to at least see those on the screen. I am seeing that Mississippi State University has the least amount of student enrollment, again, reported in 2023, which is available data. They have 21,000 students compared to what we're reporting, our 26,490 student enrollment. So we're seeing at the basement of this analysis around student enrollment, it's about 22,000. At the top end of these peers, student enrollment at Purdue is at 58,000. So that one metric isn't a simple metric to say we fit right at the bottom or at the top. We're a little bit closer to the bottom around student enrollment. Not all of these peers checked each of these boxes. The University of Georgia is a land grant, R1 institution, multi-campus, medical school, and vet school. They have 41,000 in student enrollment. That's data that was reported in 2024. And they did not report their compensation. So I'm not able to compare them because they didn't participate in the Chronicle or Chronicle wasn't able to pull that data. So this is the kind of research that I started going through and then hit some dead ends here. Another interesting, I think, comparable is Oregon State University. They are a land-grant university, R1 research institution, multi-campus. They don't have a medical school. They do have a vet school. Their enrollment reported in 2024 is 33,946. So they also fit into the athletic peers that I looked at as well. This is a wide range. In some cases, big systems. I was comparing a chancellor versus comparing a system-wide president. Okay, on the next slide are the athletic peers. And again, I've reset PAC-12 based on the rebuilding of PAC-12. And so these are the comparables that I looked at. And we're seeing a pretty wide range of compensation-based pay, but we're seeing fairly similar student enrollment. So student enrollment at Boise State, 26,000. California State University of Fresno, 23. Colorado State, 33,648. Oregon State, 33,9. San Diego State, 33,8. So right in that kind of same area where WSU is. What I'm not finding is a comparable that has all of the elements that were on my strategic planning or my key research. So not all of them are land-grant, not all of them are R1, they're not all multi-campus. They're not, not all of them have a medical school, not all of them have a vet school. So again, the conversation around peers is such a critical one because when we start to say, well, we're like our peers, or we want to be like our aspirational peers, the question becomes, well, who do you define our peers? And so it's one of the questions Regent Pika has been asking in his onboarding meetings. Who do you define our peers and who are aspirational peers? So it's something in our next strategic planning effort that I'm sure that we will again look at and discuss. But I had an assignment, and that was to try and recommend a base salary that put us into an area that is comparable to other peer universities. For fun, I did another spreadsheet. So my third spreadsheet was other relevant comparisons. And at the top of my list was University of Washington. So we're in the same state. It's important to understand where that compensation package is. And then I looked at, because we have an open presidency at Gonzaga, where were they advertising, what they were looking for. Looked at a couple other kind of comparables. So University of Hawaii, Arizona State, University of Nebraska system, University of Colorado, Montana State, and University of California Davis. So these might be the result of conversations that I've had or Regent Pika's had relative to some of our peers. So having said that, I have four pages of research that I've done. And appreciate Leslie's ability to kind of cross-check and just look at, did you think about this and maybe check that? So this is the product of a lot of different eyes to make sure that I haven't forgotten something. And inevitably, I'm sure I did. But I wanted to provide to the board the range that I'm seeing in terms of our strategic planning peers. I haven't listed every single one of those strategic planning peers. What I did is I chose two strategic planning peers that meet every single one of the elements of the variables that I identified in my research. Land-grant, R1 research, multi-campus, medical school, vet school. I chose the least base pay and the highest base pay, so that you have a range of where we are in comparison with our strategic planning peers. I think it's also important to note where we currently are with our Washington State University president. So President Schultz's base salary is 750,000. So for you to think about, how do the maybe smallest base and the highest base within our strategic planning peers, that's what you're seeing on the screen right now. So University of Nebraska-Lincoln has the smallest base salary that they offer. And University of Maryland College Park has the highest base salary. In executive compensation, base is only one element of a compensation package, but it is an important element that we will want to get clear on how we want to move forward with our leadership profile to ensure that that base is clear. I also want to mention, Washington State University is part of Washington State, where we have new laws and new regulations. And those are making sure that that base salary is exactly what we will pay in base. So we can't get to the end of our process to select our next president and say, oh, actually, we think that the base should be 400,000, or we think the base should be 900,000. So the agreement that we will make and approve later today will be the base that we will stay within in our search process and in our, hopefully, contracting processes later this year. Yeah, Regent Powell.
When I was looking at this data that you sent us yesterday, I went to University of Maryland, since that's my alma mater. The number that's up there for that is the, that was Coupa data, I believe. And it was the 2022 number, which was the former president. The current president is Darrell Pines. And from the data from, what was the other one that you had besides? From the Chronicle.
Oh, great.
And he makes 991,859, and there are benefits of 86,000. Maryland does have a different system, and you will find that there is the whole system in chief administrator, and that person makes about 1.2. But they do it differently. Their administrator covers the entire state of everything. So it's all the university sites and the community colleges and everything. So I just wanted to make that clarification. So that actually, University of Maryland College Park, when you look at that data from, that I was just talking about, actually sort of cuts in in that sort of 900 to a million, where an awful lot of our peers are as far as total compensation, not necessarily base.
Chronicle and the Chancellor for Lincoln, which again, this is all data. So it might be older data, is showing the 356, which is vastly different than what you just said.
There may be many lots with the self-reported Chronicle data. If someone was leaving in a year, they will work for half a year of salary, half a full year of a salary.
So, sorry, I just wanted to-
No, 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 that's great. And why a communicator isn't someone that is crunching numbers. So just to be clear. There is access to this data online. I think this is really helpful. Ultimately, this was just context. This was just, let me tell you where I think that we might be. And there are lots and lots of numbers, and we can go down a lot of different paths. I believe that we need to be thinking about what is best for Washington State University. And so that leads us to a discussion, which is a multifaceted discussion that I want to have. I want to wrap up a bit of this compensation. And then I want to lead us down a path where we're going to have a conversation around the actual details of the leadership profile. So in terms of compensation, my recommendation to this board is that we think about compensation between 600 and 750,000. I'm going to, having been in this data for the last several weeks and really spending a lot of time this week going through this data, I cannot in good conscience recommend that we would pay an incoming president anything more than what we're paying our current president, who had over a decade of experience before he arrived at that base salary of 750,000. It's also important for me to note that, given where we are and given the compensation with our faculty and staff, I think that it is really important that we're paying close attention to hiring, as Regent Ramos mentioned, a rock star of a leader. But we also need to remember the context in which we operate, which is a budget that needs to ensure that we can balance it and that we're clear on where our priorities are. Of course, my priority is bringing in the next president in a way that allows them to be set up for success. I can't, like I said, feel comfortable offering a recommendation above what we're currently paying in base salary. So I'll be interested in feedback around this element of where the board is in terms of the range of base salary. I want to take a minute and I want to talk a little bit about the leadership profile. So it's a multi-page document. You saw the first version yesterday that I sent out that had been formatted beautifully. And there are some things that we needed to change in it. Just a couple typos here and there. That QAQC of making sure that we have no typos before we do something externally, we will make sure occurs. There are bigger, more significant items within the leadership profile that require a conversation among the board and alignment. I also want to just preface this conversation with, we all don't need to agree, but we all need to ensure that there's space for us to share our thoughts and opinions. So I want to go through the leadership profile and just mention that I have received feedback from the board. And I have noted there are elements that are easy for us to fix. There's, in the beginning of this university overview, a comment about two public research universities. We didn't distinguish that it was R1. Later, there's another comments around R1. So I want to make sure that there's consistency in the language in which we're presenting it. So that's something that I've made a note of. I'm going to go through this leadership profile, and then we're going to stop at elements that I think require more of a dialogue and a conversation. Athletics is an important element of what is profiled here. And this profile doesn't currently reflect our rebuilding of PAC 12. So we need to add some language here to make sure that that's been included. In addition, we inadvertently left off a key member of the senior leadership team. And so we'll be adding that, which is our director of athletics, Anne McCoy, who will continue to report to the president. There are a couple of different numbers that have been utilized in terms of the foundation. We want to get clear on what is the number. We just finished a phenomenal fundraising year. And so therefore, some of this data might be a month or two behind us. So that needs to be consistent within this document. Okay, the elements that I know will need a little bit more time to talk about, there are three. If you look at in the leadership profile, the experience, expertise and inclusive leadership qualities. Many of these qualities we did discuss during our strategic planning retreat, but we have not necessarily had a conversation around the words essential. So you're seeing in this first sentence, both the words ideal and the words essential. And so as we think about sending off four of our regions at this table to work with a group of 21 additional members of a search advisory committee, are you clear on what this board is going to be thinking and needing in essential qualifications for our next president? So I want us to get very clear about that and to list what are those essential? And if this board believes that it is everything on this list, then we can move forward. But we need to make sure that that's not ideal, that's essential. So folks will be screened out that don't meet this essential leadership qualifications. The next element that I believe we need to have a conversation about is around the location and travel expectations of the president. What is the location of the president's office? What is the location of where the president will live? We've gotten a lot of feedback and questions about that. We need to have a conversation to make sure the language in the leadership profile reflects what this board is interested in moving forward with. And then the last piece, which was where we ended in terms of the presentation, is the compensation. So I'm looking for this board to be clear about that base range of compensation. And then I've been working with Nathan and Nathan's been working with our HR team to make sure that we are clear beyond the base, what those additional benefits might be that we need to include here. And so I have a draft statement that I'll read to this group around what we may want to consider relative to the compensation. So I'm just going to go ahead and read that right now. Then I'm going to pause and I'm going to open it up for our conversation. So I wanted to do just a walkthrough of the overall leadership profile so that we knew areas where you have provided input, I have noted, we probably don't need to review those again, but there are some more meaty items that we'll want to make sure that we talk about. Here's the draft paragraph to insert around compensation. The salary range for this position is between this and this, which we'll fill in annually, commensurate with related experience and qualifications. Relocation assistance is available. Performance and retention incentives, as well as other fringe benefits standard in the industry for the position may be offered based on experience and qualifications. In addition, WSU offers a comprehensive benefit package, which includes paid sick and vacation leave, paid holidays, medical, dental, life and disability insurance package for employees and dependents, retirement and deferred compensation and optional supplemental retirement accounts. For a more detailed summary of benefits offered by WSU, please review the summary of benefits for WSU faculty and total compensation. So that's how we kind of cleaned up that section a bit. And I feel less compelled to wordsmith this since we have had our attorney and our HR team look at that. But if there are questions about that particular paragraph, we can go back to it. Obviously missing a pretty important element in the base range. So with that, I will just maybe pause and just see, Regent Ramos, is there anything else you want to add relative to the leadership profile? That might be helpful. Okay, all right. Okay. Regent Powell.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really liked the revised wording on that. So thumbs up.
Yep, I just, so we do not have to get more specific about the benefit side of a comprehensive compensation. We just need to define that range for the base.
That's correct. Yeah, I think we cleaned that up between the version that you saw yesterday and where we are today. So I'm getting the nod that that's A okay, as long as we just fill in the missing piece there. Okay, so I am open to where we want to start. Yeah, Regent Blankenship.
I, I was simply going to say I would move to accept your recommendation and range if that works for your motion.
That's great. We're not actually, we're in the, I know it seems odd, but we're still in committee. So we don't have to make a motion yet. So I appreciate that though. And if there's kind of some consensus, then we can move forward with the edits that you'll see in the final version for the actual board meeting later this morning. So. Okay, I think we needed, we got to move forward. We have folks that are going to be ready for us to move into our board meeting.
Lisa, I'm, I'm sorry. I just want a quick question. The salary range that you propose, did you run that by our search consultants to make sure they're comfortable with that?
Yes.
As far, okay, thank you.
It's, it's good. And I think it's good for everyone to hear the, the answer to that too. All right, I'm going to move us to the first section. So I'd like everybody to take a look at the experience, expertise and inclusive leadership qualities. I'm not going to read all of these. There are a significant number of leadership qualities that, and qualifications. And so I am curious if there's anything on this list that folks would say is not essential. So again, the word essential, meaning they must have this experience to be considered. It's two pages. One of the elements that we've heard in our listening session is the idea of whether or not the next president should be an academic. So the first bullet here of an earned doctorate. And second, excellence in academic and administrative leadership. It's listed here as essential.
That first bullet actually gives you, it's pretty wide open as far as I read it because it, it offers or equivalent. Am I on the right page?
Yes, you are. Absolutely.
It's the, the second bullet though, is one of the ones that I was wondering if we didn't need to make a slight modification because it says excellence in academic and administrative leadership. And if we want to have a wide enough open, opening, I just wonder if we shouldn't say excellence in academic and/or administrative leadership.
It does include at a major research university.
Yeah, or equivalent organization. So, you know, say, just say a national lab director, something like that. That would be, that would be, it's not going to be me.
Are you applying for the position, Regent Powell?
No, 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 no. I'm at that 74 level at the top. I'm beyond that one. Anyway, I think we want to, we want to be flexible because we don't know who is going to apply. Chances are we will get somebody who has the academic credentials, but we don't know. And I just don't, I don't want to, I, I'm trying to stay away from some absolutes just to leave the door open a bit.
Great reading between the lines. I think you're trying to be flexible, like say a talented, popular governor or something may be interested.
It could be.
Be open to that.
Yes.
Because I think-
Yeah, I mean, the unic-
Flexibility you're after.
There are unicorns out there.
So does this do that? Does that?
I, I think that if you, it's, I was just thinking to just put the academic and/or administrative leadership. The end, they actually add and/or sort of leaves that door more open rather than specifying that it has to be academic, which is as an and. Jen, how do you?
I think the committee members understand the consensus idea. I'm, I'm less concerned about the words smithing is understanding.
Well, it's, it's the person reading it though.
Right.
And if I read something that said you had to have an academic background, when I was a national lab director, for example, I would not have applied or felt that I would be qualified because I didn't have that academic experience. That's, that's, that's my only point. I think you're correct. The committee does understand that.
Regent Pika, were you going to say something?
I just, that sounds good to me, just because it provides some flexibility.
Okay.
I agree. Just, I think that does provide some distinction too.
So Reed, so just to make sure I'm tracking excellence in academic and/or administrative leadership at a high level in a major research university or equivalent organization. Okay. Also, Regent Ramos mentioned, we need to look at if there's anything here that's ideal. We can move to an ideal list versus an essential list. So just keep that in mind as we kind of go through this. Other comments and feedback?
I'll just note that everything on this list are, you know, reflective of the input that we've heard through all the listening sessions and shared governance groups. And I know it appears to be a lot and it is a lot. It goes back to my earlier comment about high expectations. And, and you know, process wise, as we go through evaluation, these words will get captured in a rubric to where we will then evaluate the candidates. So, you know, we can refine what is essential versus ideal. But I'm not, I'm not sure if you want to do that right now, Lisa, or you want me to collect the information. We're, we're not looking to post a profile until Monday. So we'll just-
We have to approve the profile.
Yeah.
So we do need to look at if there's anything that is not going to remain in this list and/or if we want to just strike, well, no candidate will bring, well, no, it's here. Well, no candidate will bring all of the ideal qualifications. Washington State University also seeks a president with the following essential qualification. So if there is something that's coming off this list, we do need to make that decision. Otherwise, it will all remain essential. Okay.
Real, real quickly, if I can make a quick comment.
Please.
Yeah. You also have the option of picking some to be essential and some to be preferred. So it doesn't have to be either or. We just need to identify which ones are which. Is another option you could, the board could do. You could have two lists, essential ones and, and preferred.
It's a lot to take all of this in right now. I am going to give us a break before we go into our board meeting. In the actual moment of action, there can be edits made if we don't feel like we're comfortable making those edits right now. But we do need to have a final leadership profile. So maybe I'm going to move us on just because we got to keep going. And there's a couple of other areas that I know that the board will want to weigh in on. So let's move to, let's move to compensation and then we're going to go to location and travel expectation. So I provided a recommendation of a base range. I provided some backup research. I'm open to a conversation around where the Board of Regents feels like that compensation range should be.
I'm very comfortable with the range and appreciate the in-depth peer review you did to come up with that suggested range.
Thank you, Regent Pika. President Schultz, do you have some insight and comments?
I'm not going to comment on the range. That's a, that's a board decision. But I, I think sometimes as a board, you can say, well, we'll bring in somebody at a lower compensation level and let them show us they do a great job and then we'll bump their compensation. That makes perfectly logical sense. And it can put the president, this is just public higher education, in a really difficult spot because you say, well, Susie Smith has been an amazing president, been here three years, we need to bump her base. And campus just goes crazy because they say the rest of us have gotten 3% raise and you gave the president 20% raise. And you can claim they deserve it and all that stuff. So all I'm saying is that my tenure here, we had one major adjustment that the board did, and I appreciate that very much. Be careful of getting sucked into, we can make changes in compensation along the way. That may work in other things, but it puts the president in a difficult spot of maybe saying, you all could get worried about losing somebody and you feel you got to do it, but it puts them in a really difficult spot on campus. So my suggestion would be put together the best level compensation package, whatever that looks like that you think for the candidate coming in, probably understanding that you really need to go several years without making much adjustment to that, just to help them on campus. Because when somebody comes in, they say, hey, that's why I negotiate with the board, doesn't mean everybody's happy. But people tend to move on from that pretty quick. So that's just a general statement more than it is arguing about the numbers or anything like that. But I was at an institution where they tried to do that several times. And actually, at one point, the six public presidents sat down with the board and said, please don't adjust our salaries anymore. It causes us more difficulty. And they said, well, we're worried about losing you all and going to other states. And you said, yeah, but I can't do my job because that's all spent is two months defending board action on that. So just, it's a little bit of the academic culture. And WSU, I think, is no different than other public universities in how they treat, you know, president chancellor compensation.
I think that's really helpful because I think on the private side, you have more flexibility to do those things without having so much of a public process where there's a lot of input. I wonder, Regent Dickinson, if there's anything you might want to share since you've done some of this research in the past during your time as chair?
Well, we certainly did this with President Schultz and with Nathan's assistance. And it, it's, it is complex and just the experience that you've just had there. It's a tricky thing because it's clever, is how I would put that in quotations, on how certain universities report their presidential compensation. And so there's all kinds of things around base, but it even gets, the area you did not even touch, which gets really tricky, is the other space. And that just, base pay is what it is. But the other is kind of where my head is more at the moment around performance and retention. Because I think you're appropriate in the ceiling of the base. And I think the, and I am in favor of that. I think we're going to really need some guardrails around what the other might look like, and that's for a different discussion.
Regent Blankenship?
I was just going to add, I'm comfortable with the range of the base. My, my motivation was to have a wide enough latitude for you, you and Jen to negotiate the base at that appropriate time. But to publish a range, we need to do that. And I thought it was a wide enough range to get interesting candidates. I agree. I'm comfortable with that range.
Okay. Thank you for the feedback and the grace around my research to get us to where we had enough context. All right, I want to talk a bit about the location and travel expectations. I think this was a conversation that we had in June. It's certainly been a conversation that we continue to have relative to the expectations we're setting for our new president. I have received an amendment to the draft that was in front of the boards. I'm going to read this to get us set up in terms of the context of what we need to discuss. So the amendment- So the amendment is the office of the president will be located on the Pullman campus. A significant amount of visible and reliable access to the president in Pullman is expected. The residence of the president is a personal decision that should support the requirements of mobility to conduct effective university business and operations across the system. The Board of Regents is seeking the most qualified candidate to lead the university who will be prepared to travel frequently to the state capitol, to visit donors, and to represent WSU's interests where needed. I believe there's other amendments that may be suggested at this point. So Regent Powell?
Played around with this a bit last night, and this is what I came up with. The office of the president is located on the Pullman campus. The president is expected to travel frequently to conduct effective university business and operations across the system, visit with donors, and represent WSU's interests in the state capitol, Washington DC, and elsewhere as needed. The residence of the president is a personal decision that should support the requirements of mobility.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
Well, I'll just weigh in and say that I fundamentally believe that if you don't define a physical location, just I, I watch corporations and companies that have CEOs, for example, in leadership that have mobility to perhaps their headquarters but reside in a different state or perhaps a different time zone or perhaps a different community of which WSU is not existing in. I, I think that that creates an immense amount of interesting waters to navigate with your students, your faculty, your donors, and your alumni.
What would you recommend we change?
Well, I mean, it's, I'm not sure that I can speak for the whole board. I'm speaking for myself here. I believe the president should be residing in Pullman, Washington.
I would agree.
Me, too.
I disagree. And I, and I can tell you why. The president needs to be out and doing all the things that we're talking about the president doing, going across all the campuses, being in Olympia, being in Washington DC, being in Seattle, being all over the place, country, statewide and countrywide. That's not practical from Pullman. And I can tell you, as someone who just lived in the tri-cities and had a large organization and had to travel back and forth to DC, back and forth to the West Side, it was really difficult. And I was, you know, I was gone two-thirds of the time. And I, you know, it would have been heck of a lot easier if I could have been in Spokane, for example, you know, where I could, could at least not take three airplanes each way to go someplace. I just really think that we need to, I understand those of you in Pullman who grew up with the president walking the campus all the time, and that's then why that might be a passion. But times have changed. It's a long time since. And we, what we're, at least what I've been hearing that we're looking for in a president to do all these things, to develop and, and operate a system to, you know, be, you know, basically work to increase the finances of WSU, both with alumni and through legislation. I mean, we, we've got to think about what that type of thing requires. If the, as I, my, my proposal for this, has the office being cited in Pullman, that in itself means that the, the president, you know, will likely be in Pullman more than other places. But you've got to give them the flexibility to do their job. And by making, insisting that they live in Pullman, I believe we're doing a disservice to the incoming president. Now, I can say this because I'm, you know, I wasn't, I'm not a born and raised COO, but I am an adopted COO, and I care very much about it. And I will tell you that when I was on University of Maryland's campus, I never saw the president and it didn't bother me one bit. So I just cared that somebody had a great place for me to go to school and a lot of the other things. So, I mean, I know it's a difference, a cultural thing, so.
I see Regent Pika and Regent McDonald.
I'm confused about the assumption that there'll be a single residence. I'm just looking at Kirk and thinking how many different places he lives has a footprint. Or, you know, I, I think we have a couple other people that have a, might have a house in Spokane and an apartment here or, so do we even, don't we recognize that the president's going to have multiple places they call home? And I don't know when we say "the residence," what we mean.
Regent Pika?
I think that's a good point, and it could be primary residence. But I think everything you said, Laura, is, this is clearly, we're talking about someone who is everywhere, you know, with our system, which is not what it was like years ago, of course. Sometimes I think we lose sight of the fact that Pullman remains, if you looked at this big picture, what, 85% of activity comes, this is the primary site, this is the epicenter still. When you take all the other sites into effect, this remains the primary epicenter of WSU. And I just think for this time especially, it's not to mean that it can't change, but, and I, and I think the point about residency, maybe it is primary residency, but there is a message that we imagine this, because then you set your office, which has already been articulated in the language, up as well here. So you're in Pullman, but you're physically, you're everywhere, and you could have multiple sites.
Then why do we have to have the, the primary residence in Pullman? Why couldn't the president have a primary residence, for example, in Spokane and an apartment in Pullman, which I think Leslie actually has? I mean, what is the problem with that? We have a provost, we've got a chancellor already, there's plenty of leadership in Pullman. And I, other than, you know, this, sort of the, the cultural fuzzy feeling of having the president on, on the campus, I, I just, I'm having a lot of trouble understanding why and with what we're asking the president to do, that we're, we're thinking about, you know, considering requiring that the president has to live on the campus. I mean, some people have had, it was a conversation briefly last night where somebody said, well, maybe they can just stay in the, the Idalou House, you know, when they're on campus. And I think that's, that's, that's a good solution. But I, I, I just sort of feel like we shouldn't, we shouldn't dictate that. And I'm not sure, I, I just can't see the reason for having it.
Regent Ramos, did you have something you wanted to add?
I like the original language, only because, you know, we said the president's office will be located on the Pullman campus. That is a shift. That is a, an expectation that we heard from a lot of different locations. Visibility in all campuses is really important, as well as the locations to conduct operations of the university. We did maintain that the main residence of the president is a personal decision. And I think that I agree that there are multiple residencies that we have. And I like the idea that there's a good amount of time in Pullman. There's people here that need to see you. So, I don't know.
Could I add something? I, I would kind of draw the comparison of, you know, not, not, I, I agree with your sentiment that, you know, it's important that every campus is visited and there's presence on all campuses. But I would draw the comparison between, you know, not having a lot of presence on Pullman to, you know, when we were in the pandemic and we were all virtual, that creates a very different environment and a very different feeling than having that presence in a place. And so I think that comparison can kind of be drawn between having a, spending a lot of time somewhere that isn't Pullman creates a very different feeling and a different type of presence. And so I, I would just echo that I think having the president spend, you know, a lot of time in Pullman is really important. And, you know, how that looks in terms of, you know, residency might, you know, people might have different opinions on that, and that could look like different things. But I just, especially as a student, want to emphasize that I think that presence is really important.
But is it not important for all students?
I think it's important for all students, but to Regent Pika's point, you know, Pullman is still a really important kind of, kind of essential part of the system. And if things, you know, kind of don't go super smoothly, that will negatively affect the entire system.
I'm, I'm wanting the Pullman presence not so much for us to see the president, but for what the president sees. If he, if the president is, and I think that's important for all the campuses, but 85% of what we're doing comes out of this campus. I want to make sure that the president is seeing the, hearing from the people on this campus, seeing what our classrooms are like, seeing what our research infrastructure is like. So in order to do that, you have to be on the ground here and on the other campuses. I, I don't want to, I don't want to say you got to be in Pullman and nowhere else. I think we need to be clear that we expect our president to have a footprint on each campus. And the size of the footprint may matter, may change with the size of the campus. But it's not just to be seen, it's what they see and who they talk to and...
And I think that's a, that's a very good point. What I'm sort of feeling uncomfortable with is the statement about it being a substantial amount of time that's current in the current language. Or there's something, I may be paraphrasing that incorrectly. Because of all the things that we are asking the president to do, I don't think it is reasonable to require the president to spend like three days a week in Pullman and two days doing all the other stuff that's of higher rank as far as what we've been talking about. So I just don't see that it's feasible. I would have no, you know, if you want the president to have a presence, I don't, in fact, I don't think you ought to state any amount because as soon as you do that, then the president's got to be elsewhere for a whole week. And so you've got to, you've got to provide the president the flexibility to be able to do their job.
I, Regent Serna, then Regent Dickinson, and then I'm going to try and land this. Okay, Regent Serna?
Yeah. I don't know how to schmooze old language here, but I want to take a little bit of what, take off on what Nathan had said earlier about us having a preferred list of things. And maybe what we can say is something that it, we, it is preferred that the president spend a significant amount of time or however we want to term that, that says we want you here and present. But maybe with the understanding that, you know, yes, you're going to have to do a significant amount of travel, and we want to give that flexibility. And I think maybe give them that opportunity to make a decision about where they, where they want to live. Because I almost think that they're, they're going to have to figure out how it works, you know, and what's going to work for them. I, I, as I think about it more, I don't know that I want to completely lock in and say you got to be here in Pullman all the time. But I think obviously they've got to be, they've got to have a presence. And, but we also know that we've, everything has changed. And so I think we're asking this person to go out and fundraise a lot. And that means getting out on the road. And I, I wonder what your MyLead plan went up to, you know, all the time that you spent on the road. I mean, we're, we're asking that person to do that. So I think we got to give that flexibility to what will work for them. Because that is, that's a lot. That's a lot to have to endure. And so I think we have to find some little ground here on this thing, but not lock ourselves into it completely.
So I, I think, Laura, thank you because I think you offer up some really valid things to think deeper on. My question would be, how is everybody's comfort level when we do a press release that says the new president of Washington State University will have his primary, he or she's primary residence in Portland, Oregon? Because it's very mobile. And will be the next president of the Washington State University? Or their primary residence is going to be in San Diego? Because it's super mobile to DC and to Spokane and to the tri-city. So I, that's just, I'm looking at it from an optics standpoint, too, around just a personal preference to me is a pretty wide open statement. And I even, I fundamentally have a challenge kind of getting my head around the president of Washington State University will reside in Seattle, Washington. Again, there's a lot that goes into that, but...
Would it work for you if there's Spokane?
I'm not, no, actually. So I, again, I am not speaking on behalf of the board. I'm speaking kind of where I'm at, from what is rooted in the foundation of a land-grant institution and where this was founded. And, but I could be moved to at least they have to live in the state of Washington. Because just leaving it open to a personal preference, heck, I want to make $750,000, stay in my house where I'm at, and I'll fly around and get there when I get there. I, you know, and then you better be really succinct because I employ a lot of people that work virtually and have a lot of mobile ability. But do you want them in Pullman three days a week? Do you want them in Spokane a day a week? Do you want them in Everett a day a week, in Vancouver? I mean, you're, you're going to want to be real clear on that because six months into it, you haven't seen your president in Pullman or on the Vancouver campus for three months? What's our recourse to be navigating a performance evaluation around that, too? So those are just all nuances that I think are open for discussion. But at minimum, I, there's no way, I believe it's a personal preference of where they get to live. This board better lean in at least and follow it with the state of Washington.
Well, I think there's just kind of this common sense thing about if you're going to take this job as a president of Washington State University, that you're going to be in the state of Washington.
I appreciate that, but the language states here, it is their personal preference.
Let me, let me try to give some updated language and see if we might be at a place where we can seek some consensus. The office of the president is located on the Pullman campus. The president is expected to have a residence in Pullman and is expected to travel frequently to conduct effective university business. This travel will require a presence across the system, visit with donors, and represent WSU interests in the state capitol, Washington DC, and elsewhere as needed. The primary resident of the president should be in Washington State, and this residence should, residence should support the requirements of mobility.
Can you read that one more time?
Yeah. And you will have a copy of this to look at between this committee meeting and when we are expected to take action. The office of the president is located on the Pullman campus. The president is expected to have a residence in Pullman and is expected to travel frequently to conduct effective university business. First two sentences. Next, the, the travel will require a presence across the system, visit with donors, and represent WSU interests in the state capitol, Washington DC, and elsewhere as needed. The primary resident, residence of the president should be in Washington State, and this residence should support the requirements of mobility. I said a residence, not the primary residence. Your face.
Do, do we need to say primary anywhere?
I, I do.
I'm thinking, is your primary residence Spokane or tri-city?
So I said down at the end, the primary residence of the president should be in Washington State.
But, but why do they have a primary residence? It seems to me this is a person that's going to move around a lot. Why is there, why, why do we say there's a primary? I think they need to be a Washington State resident. But I'm, I'm confused by the primary. You might have a... But I'm, I'm confused by the primary. You might have, a president might choose to have three small footprints, one in Seattle, one in Pullman, one in Vancouver. Three apartments. What's the primary residence if we do that? I'm confused by the word primary. It's just primary that's throwing me.
Okay.
They need to be a Washington resident.
The president is expected to be a Washington State resident and will have a residency in Pullman. We'll have a.
Why don't you just say that the president will reside in Washington State?
Why don't you just say that it has, has a presence in Pullman? Cause I don't, I, I don't think we're all aligned in this and that's fine. And I can continue to wordsmith. And maybe I will do that until we get to a place where we can vote on this, but doing this in public on YouTube is probably not my best use of talent. So I'm going to take a pause for, on this. Is there anything else on this leadership profile that we want to talk about before you see another draft of this and we're expected to approve the leadership profile? Yes.
I had a comment on the essential qualifications, but I don't know if you want to loop back to that later.
Let's do it now.
There was one that I noticed, a track record of overseeing successful initiatives to increase enrollment and improve the student experience. Just kind of came off as a little bit limiting to me if we're not looking for someone who's or if we're leaving it open to people who aren't in academics.
That's a great comment. Do you have a suggestion of, maybe?
Ideal, not.
Maybe an understanding or yeah.
So let's test this. This particular statement, does the board feel like this could be a preferred qualification as opposed to an essential? Okay, okay. Seeing some head nods? All right. Is there anything else that, yes, Regent Powell?
Okay, so the bullet is the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seventh bullet down under, you know, expertise, where it says, "A deep understanding of the national higher education landscape and a keen sense of how to differentiate an institution and competitive field." I would just get rid of the word deep because and that's, you still have to have an understanding and it could be from a different, a different angles. So, and then the other one was the, the third one from the bottom where it currently reads, "An astute understanding of university finances and strategic data-informed approach to budgeting." I was, I would suggest changing that to "An astute understanding of complex finances and strategic data-informed approach to budgeting." And then delete the, "In the academic environment."
Got it. Other comments? Okay. This has been a great conversation. It's been relatively exciting and the way in which I'm hoping that this board continues to show up, which is not a board that just reads our materials and says yes, but a board that engages actively in a conversation to ensure that we're each representing what we believe is best for Washington State University. So thank you for the time and the attention and the fast work to look at the, the draft that you received yesterday. At this time, I would like to conclude the agenda items for the executive and governance committee. I know that we are running a half an hour late and I think that the work that we've done here today is really important and that that's okay, that we're going to run a little late. We do have some folks that are only able to make it to our board meeting within a window of time. So I may make some adjustments when we come back as to how we move through some of our shared reports. So I am going to go ahead and give the board a 15-minute break. So we'll come back at 11:30. Again, appreciate the conversation today. So this closes our committee meetings. We'll open our board meeting at 11:30.
Good afternoon. It's time to start the meeting of the Washington State University Board of Regents. We are calling, I'm calling this meeting to order. My name is Lisa Keho Kaloli-Shauer and I'm the Chair of the Board. We're here in Pullman, Washington, and we've adjusted our schedule slightly, having finished a committee meeting this morning. And now getting started in our board session. Couple of things that I want to mention. We have public comment, which is welcomed at this meeting at a designated time, which will be after the regular agenda items. I recognize that we're running about 30 minutes behind. So just factor that in if you're planning to provide public comment. Although I do strive to make up the time within the meeting, we do want to allow for enough time for a healthy discussion before we move through either the shared governance reports or the committee reports by the board and the needed action items. The time to submit a public comment for this meeting has closed. If you wish to make a public comment at a future meeting, you may do so by submitting an online request at regents.wsu.edu or by emailing regents@wsu.edu. I'll just note that we do have members of the public and the community that will be addressing the board later this afternoon. And when we receive any email correspondence that comes into that email box, the board has the opportunity to review those. So if you'd like to reach out to the board, we're listening and this is the way to do so. September 15th kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month, and so I always want to make sure that we're recognizing that. I did a quick Google search of WSU and Hispanic Heritage Month, and there are multiple ways you can celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month across all campuses in our system. So if you're interested in doing so, I'm sure you will learn a lot. And this is a great opportunity to continue to celebrate an important aspect of our culture and folks that say yes and home to WSU. We have some new members at this table that I'd like to recognize. First up is our new student Regent Cassandra Vogel. She has her undergraduate degree in economics and English from Washington State University and is moving forward with her Masters of Applied Economics degree. She calls Vancouver home, which is exciting when she's not here in Pullman. And as any student Regent is balancing full day, 7:00 AM to 8:30 at night meetings. And we are appreciative of your voice here at this table and glad to have you join the Board of Regents. So Regent Vogel, let's welcome her. The other member of our team that is new at this table is Dr. Chris Riley-Tillman. And Chris joins us as our provost. We're very excited to have you here. And I know that during the academic affairs meeting, we will learn a little bit more about you. But I just wanted to add that having your presence, your voice, your optimism and positivity has been a welcome addition to the leadership team. We're glad to have you at this table. And just wanted to officially welcome you, Chris. All right. I typically, at this point, do a bit of an overview of what the Regents have been up to and a bit of my report. I'm going to go ahead and save that until later in our meeting so that we have the opportunity to ensure that some of the folks that are visiting with us today have the time and space to do that, within the time they're also available. And at the beginning of our time together is an opportunity to say thank you and to offer gratitude to someone who is on the screen but has, or was on the screen for a moment and then he left. He was, okay. I would like to acknowledge our fellow former Regent Isaac Mardokin, who has joined us now. Former Regent Mardokin concluded his service as the Washington State University Student Regent on June 30th of this year. To honor Regent Mardokin, a commendation has been prepared, which I will read now and ask for a vote to adopt the resolution commemorating Regent Mardokin's service. So I will get started with that. Whereas on July 1st, 2023, Governor Jay Inslee appointed Isaac Mardokin as the Student Regent of Washington State University. And whereas on June 30th, 2024, Regent Mardokin completed his term on the Board of Regents with distinction. Whereas Regent Mardokin carried out his responsibilities with considerable thoughtfulness, enthusiasm and loyalty to the students and the entire university community. And whereas Regent Mardokin has served as a passionate and dedicated advocate for all WSU students and always represented the university in a positive, professional and competent manner. And whereas, while serving on the board, Regent Mardokin has been an exemplary and generous citizen of the university, giving willingly of his time and talents while endeavoring to advance the university's efforts to serve the public good and community statewide. Whereas Regent Mardokin has enhanced the role of Student Regent as a member of the Board of Regents and Academic and Student Affairs Committee by providing thoughtful and sound counsel from the student's perspective. And whereas Regent Mardokin has provided exceptional leadership in serving as Chair of the Student Regent Recommendation Committee for the 2024-2025 Student Regent. And now therefore, be it resolved that Isaac Mardokin be commended for his dedication and service to Washington State University and to the Board of Regents. And be it further resolved that the members of the Board of Regents of Washington State University, speaking on behalf of the entire Cougar Nation, acknowledge with sincere gratitude and appreciation the contributions of Isaac Mardokin and wish him success in all future endeavors. Dated the 20th day of September 2024. So I'm going to pause and just, we're going to give you a round of applause and then I'm sure. Some of my fellow Regents may have a couple of comments, but we love having a student at this table. And we are incredibly excited when a new student joins and so sad when we need to say goodbye. And we need to wish our next student Regent in all the best in their endeavors moving forward. So maybe I'll just pause to see if anyone else has anything they might want to say. Regent Serna?
Just want to acknowledge how just great it was to have Isaac be part of our board for the time that he was. And did you get a job yet?
I did, I did.
So tell us briefly about that.
I'm a true good heart, but truly, what a wonderful, wonderful experience. I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Regent Powell?
I would just sort of like to add to that. You know, I just really appreciated your true thoughtfulness about how you contributed to our deliberations. You know, you, like so many, in fact, like all of our student Regents, spend an inordinate amount of time talking to your colleagues across the system. And the value that we get from having you, you know, sort of represent that, the various points of view is just so incredibly valuable. There really are not words to adequately say how valuable it truly is. So, and I really, I just had fun getting to know you on our trips back and forth and to meetings and that type of thing. So wish you so much great success and I know you will be extremely successful and we miss you. But we welcome our new student Regent and are excited to have her as well.
Dick, I just wanted to express my gratitude as well. What I observed about Isaac is his work outside of the Regents table, where people look to him as an authentic leader. He was articulate, caring and carried the Coog spirit in just a very authentic way. So I wish you well and I'm just really glad to get to know you and can call you a friend now. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Ramon.
I will just share with you, Isaac, that there was a little bit of a competition in terms of, oh, did you hear where Isaac was going? He didn't tell me. Did he tell you? So I think that you will definitely be missed at this table. And you have a strong and powerful voice that I hope you will continue to use as you continue your career. So with that, I am asking that we take this commendation that's being presented now to the Board of Regents. I move that the Board of Regents adopt Resolution 240920-718. And I'm looking for a second. Awesome. Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone against? All right. Hearing none, this commendation has been approved and this recommendation passed. So I will now turn the floor over to President Schultz and just continue to wish you well, Isaac. So stay in touch.
Thank you, Chair Shauer, and thank you, members of the board, for your amazing work and your support and the amazing work you're going to continue to do for our amazing university. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Exciting.
All right. Well, thank you. In lieu of slides today, I'm just going to do a verbal report. So let me just hit a couple kind of key things and then I'll turn my time over to Chancellor Soleil. This last week, we really enjoyed a great week in Seattle. We had, it's the first time in probably during my tenure at WSU that we've had a full concentrated week of activities in the Seattle market. And of course, the Apple Cup, the third week of the year. I know there are some traditionalists that will argue it's not Thanksgiving and all that. From a university perspective, our ability to shape the week leading up to that, that's not a typical vacation week for families, has been really, really productive. So Sei Chi shared with you the work that we did on student recruitment. We had over 20 events in Seattle in a week period of time that does not include all those recruitment events. They were around engagement with the business community. It included some donor work. It included many of our colleges and campuses had different types of events. And then we're also able to just talk with, you know, folks from a variety of walks of life that are not Cougs, did not go here to school, but are in that Seattle community, some of the important things that we're doing. So we're doing some debrief with everybody about what people liked about the week, what they didn't like about the week, what we could do to make it better. But if we're going to be continuing to play that Apple Cup in September, it's really an opportunity for us to utilize that time effectively to help promote WSU in a really good way. So as usual, these are team events. There's all kinds of people that worked on scheduling this for months, working out. But I'll tell you what, our deans and our chancellors and our executive team showed up in force. Almost everybody was there for a full week and it really made a positive difference. And then of course, you know, beating the Huskies and the Apple Cup, you know, is a nice way to end the week. But overall, it was a, it was a great week for us in Seattle. The second thing is, you know, one of the other positives during the week is we went from the PAC II to the PAC VI. And that was just a lot of work again behind the scenes. And I just want to thank John Harlow, Leslie Brunelli, Ann McCoy and Nathan Dean for the work they did. And we went from a Friday afternoon of kind of having some verbal conversations with some other university presidents to, you know, hey, let's make an announcement Thursday. And you can imagine doing the legal documentation, all the other conversations that need to occur, the financial modeling. There was not a lot of time to wait and we really appreciate the fact that our team leaned in so much and was an integral part of those conversations moving forward. But it was a great week. I think from that perspective, just every event that we were at that had Cougs, people were excited about a rebuilt PAC 12. And I think that's an important piece for us moving forward. And now everybody's, what's that next step? And the same team of people is continuing to work it. And I look forward to, you know, in whatever timeframe we get that done, making that announcement that our pathway forward just got a lot cleaner from where we are with Cougar Athletics than it was even seven, eight days ago. So with that, that concludes my report. And I appreciate the opportunity to visit with the board. And I want to make sure that, any questions that you all have? All right. Thank you.
Actually, I, yeah, hang on. What I just wanted to say is, as the board focuses on finding our next president, it is important for you to also hear us say that in the listening sessions and in the individual meetings that we're having, that these conversations are building on the strengths that you have brought to WSU and continue to show up and lead with. And so I just want to demonstrate my appreciation. There is a lot that happened last week, but there's a lot that happens every single week under your leadership. So thank you. All right. Next up is our Chancellor of Pullman slash Global. Today, you're here with your Chancellor of Pullman hat on, sharing with us what's happening in Pullman.
Oh, I said, thank you. So I'm here today in my role as interim Chancellor of the Pullman Campus. I have to be transparent. When I took on this role, you know, I've been here, I've been here in Pullman for 30 years. And if I'm being totally honest, I can't believe how much I don't know about the Pullman Campus and what goes on here. There are so many amazing things. things taking place on the Pullman Campus that I had no idea about. And I think if we are moving, when we move forward, I think we've got to be much more aggressive and much more coordinated in singing our praises and highlighting those accomplishments. So let's get started here. As many of you know, the Pullman footprint began in 1890 with House Bill 90. And in 1892, we welcomed our first class of 59 students. And then in 1887, we celebrated our first graduating class of seven men and women. Those students came from the local area. It was a very localized campus. 134 years later, here we are. It's impressive. I'm reading through the history of the transition from that 1890 mark to 2024. There are so many milestones along the way. But the one common thread that tickles me, and not in a good way, is the tension from a university on the west side of the state and our fledgling campus. From day one, there was just, there was always that tension that existed between the two. So it reminds me that some things change and some things stay the same. So with that, I'd like to lead with the most important thing we do. I'm biased. And that's educate our students. Students are the reason we're here. And I want to make sure, as the interim Pullman Chancellor, that we all on the Pullman Campus understand it is mission critical. That student success doesn't just happen in the classroom. It's a very important part of it, but it happens throughout the campus. And I want to make sure that every employee here in Pullman understands that's part of the job description. It doesn't matter what role you play, you have a responsibility to help students succeed. And I think with that, we've got to understand that there are 6,000 Pullman students that live on campus. 6,000. And to put that in context, there are 450 cities in the state of Washington that don't have 6,000 residents. So that's an impressive footprint. And those students are active, they're engaged, and they're in need. I'm going to read some things here because I didn't memorize this. So on the WSU Pullman Campus, there are 441 registered student organizations. And in those 441 registered student organizations, there's 9,000 students that participate. They're engaged. They're active. WSU Pullman employs 4,500 students, and that work ranges from the classroom to the laboratory, to housing, to dining, and everything, everything in between. And this is the one that just shocked me. There are 4,000 students who participate in service learning. So they're giving back to their communities. Those 4,000 students clocked this last year 68,000 hours of service back to a community. They care. They're connected. They're engaged. And they're also in need. Last year, we had 110 students that had to utilize emergency funding. They were not going to be able to get through their academic career. They needed, they needed support to move on. And about, not about 2,307 students utilized the Cougar Food Pantry. So it's amazing that these resources are there. Very, very proud of that. But I want us, I want us to also remember that our students oftentimes need us. They need help. And we want to make sure part of student success is making sure people have a place to live, that they have food in their stomachs, that they're supported. And I want us to keep thinking about that support of those students. So now transition to the most important resource we have, and that's our employees. So we've got 5,000 employees at Washington State University Pullman and another 4,500 students who are employed. And one thing that I hadn't thought about, but, but because someone told me I do now, is that those employees are permanent residents in Whitman County. They are part of this community. They are an economic driver. They're a social driver of the Pullman community. And as we move forward, I want to make sure that those employees also understand that there's an obligation for a relationship between the campus and the community, that it is a symbiotic relationship, if you will, that, that we look at a strong, vibrant Pullman community as a benefit to the Pullman Campus. We need a place where our employees, our students can be entertained, they can dine, they can shop, they can live. The stronger that community is, the more appealing the Pullman Campus is. And a strong Pullman Campus is a benefit to the Pullman Community. As more and more folks visit, attend the Pullman Campus, that Pullman Community thrives. So that, that relationship, that town gown relationship is something that we should all be considering. And we do, we do some really impressive partnering. So we, we have partnered just in the last four months that I've been here. I know this predates me, but having these conversations with City of Pullman, Pullman Regional Hospital, Downtown Pullman Association, Pullman 2040 Association, Pullman Chamber of Commerce, and many, many, many more. The one thing that has struck me from these conversations is the Pullman residents are hungry for our partnership. They embrace it. They want, they want to partner with us and they want us to engage with them. And so I think that's something as we move forward, that is really going to be a focus this year of the interim Pullman Chancellor, is really growing that, that town gown relationship. And so as an example of that, we've done, we've done a number of things, but the one that we just did on Tuesday, which I thought was really cool, is we did a coffee with the Chancellor. And the idea was, we were going to, we were hoping to get 15 people to come to the Idalou Anderson House, have coffee and talk about opportunities, challenges that they see in front of them. And we sent out one email and in 23 hours, we had 138 people sign up to participate in that. They're hungry. They want to have the conversation. We couldn't accommodate all 138, so we kept it to 16. We'll, we'll get everyone in over the course of the year. But we had four students, four community members, four faculty, and four staff. And those folks stayed an hour and a half to talk about opportunities and challenges. Our students are amazing. They were so active and engaged and really had, really drove part of that, part of that conversation. So I do also think that we have an opportunity to make Pullman a destination, make WSU Pullman a destination. And one of the things I'm putting together is, I don't know what the name of it's going to be, something like an incubator, but pulling together creative thinkers that come up, can come up with ideas that would draw people from around the state, around the region to Pullman and bring them on campus, especially in the summer when our students leave, where we have folks visiting the community and the campus and trying to find ways to generate revenue and engagement for, for the, for the Pullman Campus. So this last thing here, I'm not going to read these off to you, except, except for the first one. I thought that was really interesting. So our Dining Services has partnered with the Food Bank to help students understand how to cook healthy meals in their dormitories and figuring out ways to help keep those, those students fed. There's just so many interesting things going on on this campus. And so one of the things we're going to do, actually, I think, starting today, is do a weekly Pullman Campus newsletter, just highlighting all of the amazing things that, that are happening on this campus. And I know we're short on time, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop there and take any questions that you all have. Or I'm going to go back to my seat.
Questions or comments? Well, I will just add that I think the combination of the Dave and Chris and the positivity is just contagious. And so I appreciate all that you are doing. The evening Wednesday night when we had the opportunity for the board to engage with the community was just incredible. And so the way in which you're leading right now, and I think also perhaps bringing global and traditional Pullman together with that continued enthusiasm is just so appreciated. So thank you for all you're doing, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we actually are running a little bit early now. And so, so I need to go ahead. We have 15 minutes before I think our ASWSU Pullman President will be here to give her report. So perhaps since I do see members of the next group here, maybe you might want to provide your reports and then take a lunch break. So with that, I'm going to call up our Shared Governance Reports and invite Vice President for Advancement and CEO McConnell to provide the report for Advancement, which encompasses the Foundation and Alumni Association.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. I'll save my remarks until after we hear from the President of the WSU Alumni Association. Please welcome Katie Kane. Katie.
Hello, and thank you so much for having us. Thank you, Regent Shauer, President Schultz, and the WSU Board members and leadership. As mentioned, my name is Katie Kane, and I'm a proud graduate of the WSU Global Campus. Dave Selay is my, my Chancellor. So, okay. I work at Walmart, corporate offices in Bellevue, and I now live in the state of Washington. And it's my honor to give you an update from, for the Alumni Association. So last week, as part of the Apple Cup WSU in Seattle Week events, we officially launched Cougs Connect. I'm going to give this to you. Can you help me pass these out? We're going to pass these out to you guys. Our new mentoring and networking platform that connects Cougs with fellow graduates, provides mentorship opportunities, promotes Coug-owned and managed businesses, lists jobs and intern opportunities, and expands professional networks. In fact, I've already gotten my first mentorship connection after just a couple of days of this being live. So I'm thrilled for that. This system is accessible for all Cougs, both students and alumni. Cougs Connect is a collaborative effort with WSU's Academic Success and Career Center and with Global Campus. We're excited to offer this valuable service. This year, we have two WSU AA pre-games. The official tailgate party schedules for Boise State on September 28th and San Diego State on October 26th. Cougs can enjoy excellent food and music, buy WSU merchandise from the bookie, take pictures with Butch, and meet WSU leadership before the game. Each location will also feature additional events surrounding the game. And for anyone interested, they can register at alumni.wsu.edu/pregame. The Second Annual Homecoming Pep Rally will be on October 18th at the Lewis Alumni Center. Once again, we are partnering with ASWSU, IFC Panhelic Greek Life, and Residential Life to host. The event includes fan interaction, appearances by WSU leadership, athletics coaches, student athletes, a student DJ, local food vendors, a beer garden open to all, and more. And more information can be found on our website. Feast dinners are back and absolutely better than ever. Each dinner features an exceptional Cougar-connected wine, a four-course meal prepared by Executive Chef Matt Morgan and a team of talented students. The evening starts with a gallery tour and reception at the Jordan Schnitzer Museum of Art. Guests are then escorted to the dining room by the WSU marching band. Wit Cellars, the Cougar 11 Winery was featured on September 6th, and a few seats are still available for the Armstrong Family Winery Feast on November 8th. Again, more information on our website. The WSU AA is proud to present Cougar 11, the later Cougar Collector Series wine. It's delicious. The limited edition wine crafted by Cougs at Wit Cellars was released last month and is available throughout the Pacific Northwest and online. Over 600 guests attended the release events in Prosser and Woodinville. Cougar 11 is also included in the September Wine by Cougars shipment. Cougs and our amazing football team came out in force for Apple Cup Week. In Seattle, the Alumni Association event started with Saturday night, a Coug Night at the Seattle Storm, a recent grad networking event on Wednesday, Apple Cup Night with the Mariners on Thursday, the inaugural and very successful WSU AA Board Past Presidents brunch, a night with Cougs, co-hosted with the Foundation, WSU Foundation, and Enrollment Management, and a chapter-led Cougar Crawl, all on Friday. Saturday, we presented a well-deserved Regents' Distinguished Alumni Award to Jamie Kern Lima at Apple Cup, and thanks to all the Regents who were able to attend the recognition event. And we capped off the weekend with Coug Day at the Sounders on Sunday. Around the country, WSU AA volunteers held 62 watch parties. These were sponsored by BECU to engage with alumni and fans with 640 check-ins at these watch parties, which is amazing. All of these events contributed to a vibrant display of Cougar spirit throughout the week. And what a week it was. Thank you so much and go Cougs.
Katie, this is your first opportunity in front of the board, and I just want to thank you and welcome you to the board. We appreciate what you're doing. You've had a big week, so it was fun to see Friday night, the amount of alumni that came out to the museum and the, the energy there. So thank you for your leadership. We're excited to be working with you this next year. Are there any questions for Katie?
Okay, come see me if you'd like to pick up a Beat the Spartan sticker.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie.
Well, good morning again, everybody. It's nice to see you. I normally start by saying thank you for your service to Washington State University. And I think between our last meeting and today, it seems like you have been serving us in a greater capacity than maybe you ever imagined. And so I just want to say thank you again for the amount of time you dedicate to our university and express my gratitude to each of you for your time. I also want to say welcome, Regent Vogel. It's nice to see you. And congratulations to Regent Markwin for his service and acknowledgement as well. How about them Cougs? You know, I, I hope everybody starts every meeting with an acknowledgement of the, of the power of the Apple Cup win. Somebody on my team asked me Monday, is that the biggest win we've had in Seattle in 25 years? And while I'm not sure what the answer is, it's worthy of the conversation. And certainly, everybody remembers the 97 Apple Cup, but I'm not sure there's been a bigger win in Seattle since 97. My EA is 26 years old. That predates her life. And so it's a really, really big deal. And I'm just extend my congratulations to Coach Dickert, his staff, everybody behind the scenes in Cougar Athletics who help football succeed on and off the field. A huge congratulations to Ann. And then Kirk, I know we wouldn't have played that game without you. Your heavy leadership in terms of making sure people understand the importance of, of that game in Seattle this year. So just so happy and pleased. You know, our receptionist said, Mike, you seem like you're a little more hip in your hop. And I said, that should only last for about a year. And so we don't have an Apple Cup date yet for, for next fall. Kirk and Katie mentioned all the activities right in Seattle last week, and I just want to thank everybody for working together. It was a big, complex week of activities. Kirk politely said, hey, we're going to be there. Let's figure out how to get a lot done while we're on the ground in Seattle. And the team really came together. Kirk encouraged us to work together in ways oftentimes we haven't. Friday night was a good example of that with Enrollment Management, Seichy and his team bringing together, I think, more than 100 students and their parents. Various colleges and campuses had a chance to talk to prospective students. And then we had, again, a couple hundred alums and donors. And I just thought it was a great way to celebrate the whole, the whole week. But I also want to just reinforce that it's reflective of people working together, and oftentimes in ways we are not accustomed to. And so I appreciate the nudge from Kirk. And it really is another in our series of WSU in events. You know, we had been at WSU in Scottsdale, WSU in Berkeley, and we'll keep doing, we're WSU in Hawaii. You heard us talk about that. We're going to keep doing this and we're going to keep working together. And we're going to bring Cougs together and future Cougs together. And it's working. And I just want to thank everybody for participating and thank Kirk for the nudge. It's, it's having a significant impact on all of our work across the space. I also want to thank you all for your endorsement and your participation in breakfast or brunch with Jamie Lima last week. She is an amazing representative of Washington State University. And so incredibly deserving the award. It was great to meet her. And I appreciate all of you making time to be with her before the game. And appreciate the chance. We had a chance to honor and recognize her on the field as well and make sure the broader Cougar Nation saw that. And appreciate the chance. We had a chance to honor and recognize her on the field as well and make sure the broader Cougar Nation saw that. Normally, I start with fundraising, so eventually I'll get there. We finished last fiscal year with $154.3 million of private philanthropic support to WSU. That is the second-best year on record, and I'm incredibly grateful to the wide array of donors. They supported more than 1,000 different projects at WSU last year. That's three years in a row at over $150 million. This is... Well, I was going to say it's $475 million over the three years, and you're right, Marty. I'm sorry, excuse me, Regent Dickinson, that's a big deal. Yeah, thank you. And again, it's reflective of the generosity of our donors and then a really strong development team that is built on the backs of the engagement team and our ability to do this work well, and I appreciate Kirk's commitment. I've said before that, you know, this works when he's willing to be responsive and go out in the field and talk to some of our most generous donors and prospective donors. So I'm incredibly grateful and appreciative and proud of the results we have. It is changing lives here at Washington State University, and I mentioned that a couple weeks ago in a different forum, that ultimately philanthropy changes lives, and WSU is one of the vehicles where people choose to do that. And I'm so appreciative and proud of that. Real quickly, in terms of this year to date, here we are September 20th. We crested $17 million this morning. I've mentioned before fundraising is not linear, and yet we're kind of right on pace if it were linear. So feel good about the start to this year. We have recorded one really kind of wow gift, more than $5 million endowed chair position over in the College of Veterinary Medicine, specifically for oncology. Dr. Ransel will hold that position. The donors have chosen to remain anonymous. I had a chance to speak with one member of the household and express our gratitude a couple weeks ago. And it's a reflection of their confidence and belief in what we're doing in VetMed. It's very reflective of Dory's leadership, and then Lynn Haley, the Development Leader over there, does a great job. So very, I mean, anytime we deposit more than $5 million bucks in the endowment, that's a big deal. That's a really nice gift. Speaking of the endowment, June 30, 12-month performance, 10.8%. We closed the year with $722.6 million in the endowment. That's the largest fiscal year-end figure in the history of Washington State University, so just a little under $723 million. And again, there are distributions every quarter to benefit students, faculty, staff, programs, per the donor direction and the agreement between the university and the foundation. So every quarter, money comes out of that big bucket to support the entire array of WSU, all six campuses, and as I mentioned, you know, literally thousands of programs. 10.8% return. I'm appreciative of the investment committee's work. They had a good year. They do their work well, and I'm grateful for that. We don't normally report monthly numbers, but for what it's worth, the July 31st number was $738 million, again, the highest number in the history of the endowment. So the endowment, as of the end of July, $738 million. I mentioned earlier, I made a comment in a different setting about the endowment, and I just want to thank Leslie Brunelli, who's here with me, and Phil Wyler facilitated a conversation that we had. We did it in a live, online YouTube forum. This was Kirk's idea. It's accessible. We recorded it. Just to educate an array of audiences around investments in the endowment here at Washington State University. I think providing those who are less familiar with how money works at WSU, whether it's a tuition dollar or a private dollar, an endowment dollar, or payroll dollar, whatever it may be. And I thank Kirk for suggesting it. I appreciate Phil and Leslie's participation. And I've had follow-up comments from folks that say, hey, this was interesting and informative. And that was our goal, was to educate those who don't live this every day. And so I thought it was a wonderful idea, and I'm grateful that we did it. And I'll take any feedback folks have in terms of, you know, do it again next year, or do 2.0, or whatever it may be. But Phil did a great job facilitating the conversation, and I think Leslie and I kind of covered our parts of it, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have the broader conversation. Rolling back to the WSU Foundation, our Board of Directors, we are adding two people this year. Kirk, again, and I have been out in the field recruiting people. So January 1st, we'll welcome Cassa Hannan. Cassa is a WSU Pullman alum, and Carol Buckingham. Carol's also a WSU Pullman alum. They both live in the Greater Puget Sound area. Excited to have them join our board. And then our board will be back. They'll be meeting here in Pullman at the end of October. I want to just add something to Dave's comments. He talked about relationships. He talked about the importance of Pullman and the city of Pullman and WSU Pullman working together. After Dave was appointed, Kirk suggested via email that it might be a good idea for Dave to sit down with Dr. Schweitzer. The relationship between WSU and Schweitzer Engineering Labs is really important. And so Dave and I had a chance to sit down with Dr. Schweitzer, a member of his, members of his leadership team, and Haley James was there as well on Monday, and we had a fantastic conversation. And as we kind of worked our way around the room and talked about how we work together, there were a couple key data points that came out of Schweitzer's leadership team. And one is that this is a partnership relationship. No one is seeking to gain something from the other at the expense of the other party. We work together, and this relationship in this community is really, really important. And so I appreciated the reiteration and then the genuineness of that relationship. And then it was funny, one of the members of Dr. Schweitzer's leadership team said, you know, and don't forget, we're right here. And in my job, and I often either take Kirk or meet Kirk somewhere, but we fly over. We fly in and out of Pullman. We fly over SEL a lot. And it was a good reminder, you know, let's remember who's here and strengthen these relationships between Pullman and WSU Pullman and the broader WSU. So I want to thank Dave and Haley for coming with me, and I thought it was a really nice meeting with Ed and his leadership team. And we look forward to more engagement with them in many, many ways. So that concludes my report. I'll happily take any questions from anybody. And again, thank you for all you're doing for Washington State.
Thank you, Mike. When I became Board Chair, I had all these ideas about what my year as Board Chair would be in. And it's gone a different road than I thought, perhaps, but I really had hoped that all of the board members would be Alumni Association members and ideally, you know, maybe hit that platinum level, and that all of the Board of Regents would be able to give not just their time, but financially. And so I just want to use this as a moment to just say that I hope that we are able to show up and be present and supportive and that we're doing that in all the ways that are possible. So if you're sitting at this table and you haven't had a conversation with Katie or with Mike about joining the Alumni Association or about giving, I welcome that opportunity for you to do so. I also just want to add that there's so much power in both of the Alumni Report and the Foundation Report. I think to Regent Dickinson's moment of like, we got to pause. Like, you exceed expectations, and then it just becomes the expectation again. And that is not easy to be able to achieve the work that you have achieved with President Schultz just out in the field constantly. So I just want to just take a minute and do another round of applause. Since I have the microphone, I also just want to add that now, more than ever, we need more support. And so I think that Leslie and I had a little bit of a whisper of a conversation yesterday, and she heard me say, we will need to say no more often than we have in the past. And that means that we need more people saying yes to WSU financially to ensure that the number of noes that we make are less and less, and the impact to our students is less. And so I would just really encourage our alumni that might be watching to be giving and giving a lot, because we can't continue to be where we are today and to aspirationally plan for a future without the financial support that we rely on and that we're going to need more of. So with that, I will just open it up to see if there are any other members of the board that have questions or comments.
I have one. I would just like to thank you, Mike and Leslie, and Phil for facilitating that conversation, and Kirk for coming up with the idea. I think it's really great to demystify those finances for people, especially students. And I really appreciate you and other people taking the time to meet with students about their concerns and their ideas around investment, which is, you know, really important because, you know, I know everyone is really busy. So yeah, I just appreciate those efforts.
Thank you.
Mike, I'm just curious, after that big win last week, did you get much donations that they come flowing in or anything?
So the short answer to your question is going to be yes, Regent Cern. Whether it be WSU or nationally, when you win on the field, the most immediate impact is on athletics. But the broader impact that's sustained is that you do see applications go up. There is, there are more donors to the broader university. You don't see it quite as quickly. I think Adam Gander, who leads our Development Efforts in Athletics, and Kirk, feel free to chime in. I think he mentioned either two or three different new commitments of more than $100,000, literally before he got home. I mean, so that the immediate and significant impact on athletics is real throughout inter-clergy athletics. But you'll also see other positive impacts across the WSU system, both in terms of applications and more donors. You don't necessarily see a whole bunch of new significant donors to some of the academic areas, but you'll see more donors. Absolutely. Yeah, thanks. Great question, Regent Cern. Kirk?
Yeah, if I could, just a reminder to everybody that largely people tend to give when they're asked. And so it's, you know, you get some spontaneous, you know, dollars coming through. But what it will do, though, is over the next couple months, when we're out on the road in San Diego and these other places and we meet with Cougs, there'll be some opportunities where people are feeling good. You know, hey, I watched the Apple Cup. Love to see that we're on national media. Love the Pac 6, whatever it is, that opens up that door to say, this is a great time to invest in WSU. So I think it'll be the ripple effects over the next couple of months that'll be really... See? Wow. Somebody spoke from on high. It's the ripple effects that I think will also be significant, you know, moving down the road as people just feel better about the institution and their workplace. Just outside the state of Washington, people are talking to them about seeing WSU in the news, and I think it's for good stuff.
Thank you, Kirk. It's a wonderful upgrade. My answer was a little too literal, and Kirk's was more forward-thinking in terms of it expands opportunity. Absolutely.
I also think that there's another part of your message, which is we have to ask. And the ask should not just be looking down at the end of the table to Mike or at the top of the table to Kirk. And so it is our responsibility here to also be amplifying the good work that's happening and ask for the support that we need.
Thank you, Regent Shower, and I will remind my team, and Kirk and Chris and I will remind the Deans and Chancellors, because they're also very involved in asking. And then I just want to thank you again for your commitment to philanthropy around both this table and then throughout the Cougar Nation. So thank you. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. We are Go Cougs. We now are going to hear from one other shared governance group. So I know that we have a lot of other folks in the room that'll be ready to share after we take a lunch break. But right now, we have our ASWSU Pullman President, Tania Henriks, has a commitment, and therefore, we need to make sure that we have her give us an update. This is her first time in front of the board, and so we'd love for you to share a little bit about yourself, and then feel free to provide us your report.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Tania Henriks. I'm a senior majoring in elementary education, and I want to be a kindergarten or first grade teacher once I graduate. I'm from the Big Island of Hawaii, so I'm from Kalua Kona. I have four sisters who have inspired me to want to become a teacher, so that's why I've been doing this. It's my fourth year in ASWSU, so I've actually been doing this since my freshman year. I started off as a freshman delegate, then I became a senator for my sophomore and junior years, as well as serving as pro tempore within my sophomore and junior years, and then now I'm the president. So I'll just get into my updates now. So ASWSU this year, we're working on three top initiatives, and that is going to be basic needs, transportation, and domestic violence awareness. For basic needs, we wanted to focus on food insecurity, housing accessibility, and mental health awareness. For food security, we wanted to host a canned food drive once in the fall and then once in the spring, and take all the food that we donated, that we collected, and donate it back to Cougar Food Pantry, because a lot of our undergraduates, as well as our graduate students, utilize this resource. And so we want to give back to our students, and then we also want to give back to Pullman Food Bank, because a lot of the food that we'll be collecting would be coming from the Pullman community. For housing accessibility, this one, so we host a housing fair in the fall and spring semesters. We bring different landlords and different properties to our campus, and it just provides easier accessibility for our students to be able to look for different apartments that they want to lease and things like that. And then we're also potentially working on going into residence halls and speaking to our first-year students about leases to help ease the process of signing one. And with this one, we're also thinking about working with the Whitman County Landlord Association. And then lastly, for basic needs was mental health awareness. This one was, we wanted to ensure that we maintain our strong connection with Cougar Health Services, and we are planning on working with them on a mental health symposium. And then we also are going to be planning to table and host events during Mental Health Awareness Month and during Prep Week as well. For transportation, our one big thing with this one was that we wanted to reduce hourly parking garage rates from the normal weekday rates to the weekend rates during prep and finals week. We were talking to Chris Boyen, who's the Director of the Transportation Department here, and that's something that is on their radar, but we're going to be talking more about it once we meet with the University Parking and Transportation Task Force. And then lastly is domestic violence awareness. This one is something that I'm personally very passionate about. And with this one, we wanted to raise more awareness around this issue and the resources that WSU offers to combat dating violence. And we're actually sponsoring the Lauren McCloskey Foundation. I'm sure you all know what that is. And we're going to be sponsoring their Lawrence LaF event, and it's actually the first time that ASWSU is sponsoring an event with them. So that's super exciting for us. We'll have a booth at their event. The event is going to be taking place September 28th, so actually next weekend, from 9:00 to 1:00 out on Grimes and Ott Road. And we're going to have a booth there. We're going to be working alongside staff from the Dean of Students' Office, and we're just going to be informing WSU students and the Pullman community members of the resources that WSU offers for students for dating violence. And then we're also going to be sponsoring 15 runners, hopefully all from ASWSU, so we can get some ASWSU people in there running the races. And then we're also going to have student discounts as well for reduced ticket prices for all of our students. So those are just some things that we've been working on so far this year. And then some other updates is that we have been able to fill almost every single position within ASWSU, which is so exciting. We filled every single one but one position. So that includes 15 positions in our executive branch. We have 24 positions in our legislative branch, but we filled 23 of them. And then we filled all seven positions in our judicial branch. And then lastly, I'll talk about some department updates from the executive branch. So first, the Department of University Affairs is working on several things that include the Mental Health Symposium that I talked about earlier and establishing a stronger relationship with Cougar Food Pantry. They're also working with the WSU Computer Science Department and the Voile College of Engineering on creating a food app and collaborating with the ASWSU Senate on working on a resolution for residence hall sustainability. Our Department of Community Affairs, so we actually just recently hired our director. And so throughout the summer and for most of the beginning of the school year, I was taking up this position until we hired our new director. So that's exciting that we have one. And they'll just be working on doing like college hell walk audits, housing fairs, working with city council, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and all the events that they have in Pullman. And then our Department of Health and Safety is working on several things. So they're going to be doing first aid and CPR workshops that also provide knowledge on how to assist with medication. And they're also going to be doing a safety and wellness expo resource fair that will include AED training, fire extinguisher training, et cetera. And then they're also going to be handing out like health and safety items during the month of September. That could be like fentanyl testing strips, test my drink kits, disposable breathalyzer tests, all those things. And then they're also going to be hosting events during Sexual Health Awareness and Mental Health Awareness Weeks. And then the Department of Diversity and Inclusion Event and Affairs was working on our multicultural banquet, but due to the timing of everything, we had to postpone our banquet to the spring. So now they're working on, hopefully doing like a culture night to raise money for our multicultural student organizations. Our Department of Legislative Affairs, they've been working super diligently on establishing a legislative agenda for us this year to lobby at Olympia, and we hope to prioritize financial aid, basic needs, sexual assault, higher education, native scholarship, undocumented student scholarships, and also hazing legislation. And they're also working on a voter registration campaign to engage more students. to engage more students in voting. And then lastly, our Department of Communications has been engaging with students through our various social media accounts and just gaining outreach to our students. They've been filming lots of videos out on Terron Mall, and a lot of students are super excited about that. And so, they've just been advertising all of those videos, and then all of our upcoming events as well. And that was pretty much everything I had. Another thing I want to mention is actually our Safety and Wellness Expo is going to be this upcoming week on September 21, out in the mall from 10:00 to 1:00. We're going to have lots of different booths out there. And we're also going to be doing events like Puppies on the Mall during Mental Health Awareness Week. People are always so excited for that. So, I'm excited for that as well. But yeah, those are just some things that we've been working on this year.
Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions? Yes, Regent Powell.
Just some things that you've been doing. You make me tired just listening to you. Wow.
All really incredible things. And I share with you a real passion for stopping domestic violence, and I work within my own community on that. So, you know, it's sadly something that we do have to raise awareness of. So, thank you for doing that. It's along with everything else you're doing. So, kudos.
Thank you so much. Regent Vogel?
I'd kind of like to echo some of what Regent Powell just said. A lot of, ASWC does a lot for this campus, and I think sometimes that doesn't always get recognized. And I've worked with Tania before, and she's awesome, and she does a lot. And so, I just want to acknowledge that. And some of you have met Tania, but if you haven't, you should, you should go say hi to her, because she's an awesome person. And I'm just so excited that you're in this role. And yeah.
Thank you.
I'd just like to know how you managed to come from Hawaii to Pullman?
So, actually, well, if you're from the islands, like, you either want to leave or you want to stay. And for me, I wanted to go. I wanted to experience something new. And I fell in love with Washington. It was the first state that I visited leaving Hawaii. And so, I loved the atmosphere of it all. And they had a great program for elementary education. And so, I knew that this was the school that I wanted to go to. It was actually the only college that I applied to. And so, I got in, and I love it. I love being here. The Pullman is such a small town, I feel like, so it kind of reminds me of being at home. Like, everyone knows everyone. Everyone's a family here, and that's kind of how it is on the Big Island, too. And so, that's kind of why I chose WSU.
So, Tania, I forego the Chairs Report, because we were running a little bit late. And so, my portion of the report was going to be throwing up this picture. So, I think Kyle's going to put a picture up. Kamaaina in Hawaiian means child of the land. And Tania and I received an email this morning from our good friend Lester. And so, I just put this picture up, because it was going to be my portion of the Chair Report, because I think this might be the first time that we have a student body president that is a child of the land, Board Chair, and an immediate past president that are all Hawaiian or Asian Pacific Islander. And so, this is a moment that I just can't let go without just really demonstrating my gratitude, appreciation, and aloha for the way that you lead and partnership with you this year. So, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Trevor Sharr, can I have equal time?
Right now?
Yeah.
To...
Or are you going to do that later?
What, we are going to do that later.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Yeah. Just watch out, there's more great things happening with that Chairs Report. That was just a little piece, a little bit. I knew Tania wasn't going to be able to be here for the rest of the meeting. All right. With that, we're going to take a lunch break, and then we will be back at 1:15. And then we'll finish our shared governance report. So, for those that were here and ready to provide your report, we appreciate you hanging there with us until we come back together at 1:15. And at that time, we will start with our Graduate Professional Student Association. And actually, we'll start with our Faculty Senate. Sorry, I see our Senate Chair here right now. So, we'll start with Faculty Senate, and then Graduate Professional Student Association. So, thank you all. We'll be back at 1:15.